And would you please give your attention to this short video?
Due to COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom meeting pursuant to the provisions of Assembly Bill 361, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is being livestreamed on the C C T A website. The chair will call upon members, staff, and other speakers by name. Please speak clearly and state your name before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members participating by Zoom wishing to speak should physically raise their hand and unmute their mic when called upon. Members should mute their mics when done speaking. Citizens participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the "raise hand" feature, or dial *9 if participating via phone, and the chair or staff will call upon them at the appropriate time. Citizens will have three minutes to speak. After three minutes, staff will lower their hand and mute their mic. Participants via phone will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their names and organization, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received in accordance with a teleconferencing special notice for public comment guidelines are printed on the meeting agenda. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they should raise their hand and the chair will call upon them at the appropriate time. All written correspondence received after that and during the meeting will be entered into the record. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. Thank you for participating in a meeting of the Contra Costa Transportation Authority.
Thank you very much. Now, Teriann will take a roll.
Member Birdwell? Member Birdwell, I see you there.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Member Cooney, I do not see. Member Dowjelli? Don't see either. Member Ibarra?
Present.
Member Ridgway for Nestor Brush?
Present.
Member Queen?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Member Reese Brown?
Present.
Member Smith?
This is Don Queen, I am here.
I got you, thank you.
Here.
Thank you, Member Smith. Member Thompson?
Yeah.
Member Timothy, I did not see. Member To?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Kamara?
Here.
Chair Clark?
Here.
We do have a quorum, we have members Cooney, Dowjelli, Perry, and Timothy absent.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is introductions, but I believe that everybody has been introduced. So if there's no objections, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number three, public comment. Teriann, have we received any written public comments?
No written public comment.
If there's anyone who wishes to speak during the public comment on an item that is not part of the agenda?
We have no verbal public comments.
Okay. Well, that concludes our public comment item. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar, which includes the summary of actions from March 20th, 2023. Are there any changes or comments from the committee? On the consent calendar?
I would like to apologize, this is Michael Dowjelli. I was having all kinds of trouble getting into the meeting, but I'm here now, thank you.
Thank you, we have it recorded that you're here.
Excellent, thank you. So no comments or changes from the committee on the consent calendar? So, Teriann, have we received any written public comment?
No written public comment.
Right. If anyone from the public would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand and staff or I will call on you.
No virtual public comment.
All right, so this is an action item, do I have a motion to pass the consent calendar?
Michael Dowjelli, motions to accept consent calendar as written.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'm Ridgway, AC Transit, I'll second.
Thank you, so we have a first by Dowjelli and a second by Ridgway. Teriann, can you conduct a roll call vote, please?
Yes, member Birdwell?
Aye.
Member, I mean he is absent, member Dowjelli?
Yes.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
Member Ridgway?
Aye.
Member Queen? Member Queen? I'll come. Aye, okay, thank you. Member Reese Brown? Hope you're on mute.
Aye.
Thank you. Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Thompson?
Aye.
Member To?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kamara?
Aye.
Chair Clark?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously with members Cooney, Perry, and Timothy absent.
Thank you. We have five regular agenda items, two of which are action items. The first item is an informational item that will be introduced by Matt Kelly, Senior Transportation Planner, and presented by John Chu, Caltrans District 4, and I apologize if I messed up anybody's name.
Well, you've got mine right, and I think you got John's pretty close too, but I'll let him.
Yeah, you got it right.
Yeah, thank you Chair, and good afternoon, members. My name is Matt Kelly, I work here for C C T A on the planning side. The reason we're here today is to present a particular corridor within the county and what we're planning on doing with it. So you may, you probably all know I-680 running through the center of county. We don't normally come to this group with items like this, but as part of our process with Caltrans, we, you know, we pledge to do as much outreach as possible on this, so we thought we'd come to this committee and tell you what we're doing and, you know, get any feedback you guys might have on this. So we don't plan on taking a lot of your time today, but we really would like to run this by you and get any feedback you may have. So what this involves is that, you know, C C T A has several major projects on the 680 corridor. You may know we're in the process of building out the express lanes, you know, improving certain congested locations, but we're also very interested in the multimodal modality of the corridor. And in addition to improving the freeway, also improving the parallel routes for vehicles, but also for transit and for active transportation modes, and, you know, basically all modes. And so, we've been talking with Caltrans, and Caltrans has a planning office that has historically done corridor studies. But in their new kind of paradigm, they are now doing very focused multimodal corridor studies. And so, John is going to introduce the C M C P corridor studies, and I'm going to let him get into the, what that means, and also to let you know why we're doing this. Basically, it's going to set us up for funding in order to implement a lot of our goals and visions for the corridor. So I'm going to turn it over to John, let him walk you through the C M C P, and then we'll open it up for any comments or questions you might have. So John, why don't you take it away?
Thanks, Matt, let me share my screen very quickly. Doesn't look like I can share screen, can someone make me a co-host? Alright, thank you.
Good to go, John.
I hope you can all see my screen. So, good afternoon, everyone, my name is John Chu. I'm the Senior Transportation Planner and Branch Chief for the System Planning East Bay and Santa Clara County Branch here in Caltrans District 4. So with me today are Luisa Lopez and Zach Chopp from my team, and we're here to share the Contra Costa I-680 Comprehensive Multimodal Corridor Plan for C M C P. So many of you may not be familiar with the C M C Ps, so let me do some quick overview of what a C M C P is. So first of all, as Matt said, C M C P is a type of corridor plan that we do. I guess an oversimplified version of what a C M C P is, is really about identifying the corridor needs and then recommending projects to address those needs. So why are we doing a C M C P for the I-680 corridor here? First, Caltrans is required by law to conduct long-range corridor planning for all the state highway corridors in the district. And second, as Matt was alluding to, there are important projects in this corridor that will likely apply for fundings from different funding programs in the coming years. So one of those funding programs is called the Solutions for Congested Corridors Program, that's under SB 1. So this particular program requires for any project to be eligible for funding, it must be included in a C M C P. And that's one major reason why we're doing a C M C P for the 680 corridor. A little bit, I guess, sidebar here. I'm not sure if everybody is familiar with C C T A's Innovate 680 program, but based on previous planning studies, C C T A has developed a program of multiple projects. There are six major components that you see on the screen here. Of these six components, there's the express lane completion component that Matt already mentioned. This is a high priority project for both C C T A and Caltrans. So we will likely submit this project to the next cycle of the Solutions for Congested Corridors Program for funding. So to be able to qualify this project for funding, we need to develop the 680's C M C P. So moving on to the C M C P process, both C T C and Caltrans HQ have developed guidance on how we should go about developing the C M C Ps. So it's really a step process that we need to follow. And currently, we're in step 2, 3, and 4. So basically, we're gathering background information, conduct baseline assessment, and then try to identify projects we want to include in the corridor plan. I should note that the C M C Ps really emphasize multimodal aspects of the corridors, also collaboration with stakeholders like yourself. So here's an overview of the C M C P corridor. It covers the entire I-680 in Contra Costa County. But as the name suggests, it's really about the multimodal aspect of the corridor. So we're not limiting ourselves just to the freeway main line. We're including local materials in the vicinity, transit, active transportation, parking rail lots, or shared mobility hubs. It's really about all the modes within the corridor. But we're also looking at other topics such as equity, climate change, adaptation, and even land use. So moving on to the C M C P goals, we have established seven goals for the C M C P. These goals are the same goals for the Innovate 680 program. This is because the Innovate 680 goals are very comprehensive, and they have been fully vetted by all the corridor stakeholders. So instead of reinventing the wheel, we decided to use these goals as the C M C P goals. But not only that, these goals also confirm to various statewide or regional goals, such as those goals listed in the California Transportation Plan 2050, as well as M T C's Regional Transportation Plan, Plan Bay Area 2050. As I mentioned during one of the first slides, that the C M C P is really about identifying possible corridor needs and then recommending projects to address those needs. So here on the screen, you will see some example needs or types of projects we are considering. Of course, we're looking at multimodal options, then connectivity. We're looking at corridor congestion. Safety is one of our top priorities, so is equity. But more importantly, we want to learn from all the corridor stakeholders on what your needs are, what your priorities are. And from there, we can hopefully address the corridor needs more comprehensively and identify projects to address those needs. About the C M C P schedule, we started the process back in 2022. And this spring, we were able to complete the corridor goals, objectives, and performance measures. And we have recently completed the corridor overview chapter of the C M C P. We're now in the phase of identifying projects and also conducting performance assessment. During the summer, we will start evaluating the projects that we have identified, and then from there, form our recommendations. And then we're shooting for mid-fall to have the draft C M C P ready. And then by late 2023 or early 2024 to wrap up the C M C P. Of course, stakeholder is critically important to the success of the C M C P. So as you can see on the screen, we were planning on conducting stakeholder throughout the entire C M C P process. Just very quickly about the next steps, we will continue to compile corridor needs and projects, and then develop different chapters of the C M C P. But then we also plan to present the C M C P to various C C T A committees, including this one. And of course, we want to coordinate and leverage C C T A-led pub engagement activities to help inform the C M C P process. So that concludes my presentation. I just want to take this opportunity to thank C C T A for inviting us to share the C M C P, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Matt and John. And Matt, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, I don't, but I can certainly take any questions from the group.
Great. Are there any questions or comments from the group? Member To?
I think Lori had her hand up, so she was doing a physical hand, do you want to go ahead and go?
I did, as I was reaching for my, to raise my hand. So my question is, is there, what's the phasing of this project?
Not sure I quite understand that phasing, but.
Face time, is it face timing, like phase one, phase two?
Well, I mean, this is, the C M C P is really a planning document, so we're not doing this by phase. So where it's really about putting together the corridor plan itself, but then the plan will identify different projects, and those projects can be implemented over time. So, so the C M C P itself is, there's no phase in it, it's just a.
Okay, what's the project timing for completion? Do you have that, like start date and the proposed end date for finalizing the project, the document?
The document, we are shooting to wrap up the document by the end of 2023, early 2024. So that's the timeline for the plan itself. And then each of the projects that we would recommend in the plan will have its own delivery schedule.
Yeah, and, and, remember Reese Brown, one, maybe a phasing component could be that we will be applying, once we've got the document finished, we can start applying for funding through SB 1 for those projects, so, you know, and that, they do on a yearly basis. So there may be, you know, funding for one project that's granted one year, and then the next cycle, we get granted funding for another project. So the funding could come in phases for the various projects, but the document itself is done in one fell swoop.
Okay, thank you so much.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, mine.
Great, or member To?
Yeah, I'm curious if you, when you do projects, any projects, all projects, this project, do you include conversation, thought, planning process around aging and disability and access issues? On projects, do you consider those things as you, as you work on your projects? And if not, we'd love to see that changed.
Yeah, that's a very good question. I mean, as I was alluding to, equity is one of our top priorities these days. We definitely include those topics in our C M C P for sure. But of course, we are not the expert in the field, so we fully rely on experts on this call to inform us what aspects of the corridor that are more challenging to the equity communities. So we would love to get that feedback from this group.
I think it's something, I thank you, thank you for that. I think it's something, Chair Clark, that we should probably at some point agendize to have a conversation about how we might want to begin looking at accessibility on larger scale projects, because we tend to think of, you know, just para-transit, but how really is accessibility being addressed in all of our modalities? And I think that that's an important conversation at some point to have, and I appreciate you bringing the presentation to us, thank you.
Yeah, and we could have that conversation, not just germane to this corridor, but to all corridors and how we measure access, and, you know, you know, Caltrans, I know, is concerned about, you know, just crossing that barrier, the community barrier, you know, freeways sometimes stand as a barrier from getting to one side of town to the other, you know, and we, you know, we want to make sure that we're alleviating that barrier, but also, you know, there's things we may not know about that are, that are causing access issues. So, yeah, we'd love to hear about that, and we'd be happy to bring it back to this group for a more kind of county-wide conversation about access.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Especially those that are calling in, I want to make sure that we have board members that are calling in, we have enough time for you guys to speak up, since I can't see the hand. Okay, that was the comment that I was going to make to you, was just, you know, in that phase plan that you showed, you know, that you guys are reaching out to stakeholders, reaching out to stakeholders, you know, what kind of, how are you incorporating para-transit and into that feedback that you're getting, right? Are you reaching out to organizations, specifically to para-transit groups when you're gathering that information? And kind of how, that was really kind of my right along with member To, you know, how, how are you gathering that information? Or do you need and are looking for assistance to gather that information? As in recommendations of where to go and how to get that feedback from that community?
Yeah, a little help would definitely be very much appreciated. As I said, we are not the expert, and we are actually moving into an area that we were not operating in traditionally. So this is definitely something that's new to the department, and definitely something new to our C M C P team here. So if there's any suggestions on how to go about collecting such information, that'll be very much appreciated.
Thank you. I agree with member To that we should agendize that and discuss that, you know, as a group, being able to give outreach suggestions on how to get that kind of feedback. If that's okay. Anybody else have questions for Matt or John? All right, I think that wraps that up then. Again, thank you so much, Matt and John, really appreciate it. Have you stay on just a little bit to see if we have any public comments? Teriann? Have we received any written public comments about this agenda item?
No written public comments.
All right, if anyone from the public would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand, and staff or I will call on you.
No verbal public comments.
All right, Matt and John, you're welcome to stay, but I'm sure you're busy. So again, thank you so much for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
It's your part.
All right, bye. So we now have an action item regarding claim forms for Measure J Program 15 that will be represented, that will be presented by Ying Smith.
Thank you, Chair Clark, and good morning, P C C members. We have a staff report for you, and this is for Program 15 in the Measure J Program. And it's an annual item for many of you who actually have served on this committee for a long time. The, just, let me just highlight a few things. We, the normal procedures, we have a Measure J program, entire program estimate. This year, the estimate is $117 million. And by Program 17, there's an allocation of 5%. For the P C C, you review the claims from the operators. Back in March, since we made some changes, some updates for your request to the current form requirements, and you approved this updated claim form, then we sent it out to all the operators at the beginning of May, and we request that all seven operators to complete the forms and send it back to us. Since that, you, at the last meeting, you also formed a subcommittee to review the claims. Thanks for the, our subcommittee members. We had several weeks, we reviewed the claims and we met together as a subcommittee, as well as each, with each individual operator, we called them the interviews. So this was all done in May, and we, since then, the P C C's subcommittee group. The recommendation from the P C C subcommittee, I'm going to just finish my application, but, my presentation, but I welcome the subcommittee members to fill in the details. The recommendation from the subcommittee is to approve six out of the seven claims from the operators, but they don't recommend the approval of this claim from city enrichment. And they also provide specific comments and ask the city to supply additional information to, and supporting documents to justify the information they provided in the claim. So that, with your recommendation, there are two parts to it. One is to approve the P C C subcommittee's recommendation, approving seven, or six out of the seven claims, and also authorize staff to forward a recommendation to the planning committee and the authority board for the funding allocation. That concludes my presentation, and I would suggest to the chair to allow additional comments from the subcommittee members.
Absolutely, thank you, Ying. So we'll do this in kind of those two parts. One, we'll just hear from, if anybody from the subcommittee has any comments, and then we'll open it up to comments from the whole board. If that's okay, does anybody specifically from the subcommittee? I'll start here, first off, thank you again to the subcommittee. It is a it takes a lot of effort, it's a lot of reading, it's a lot. it takes a lot of effort, it's a lot of reading, it's a lot of going through, um, and I just really wanted to thank thank you guys for doing and putting that effort forth. So I'll start there and see if we have any additional comments from the subcommittee. The claim form subcommittee. And if we don't have that, then I will open it up to the entire committee for comments.
Chair Clark, you do have two hands raised.
Oh, sorry. Um, I just saw it pop up, so I'll start with board member Toth.
I think you just love me today, but Rashida was before me. I appreciate it, Chair Clark.
I'm so sorry. There's Rashida, top left corner. I apologize, Rashida.
Go ahead, Debbie. I can. Oh, okay, well, um,
Vice Chair Kamara.
No problem. I was, I just wanted to thank everybody. Um, this is one of the the first full um, paperwork or claim forms that we filled out since COVID. Um, I think it has been very, it's been very gracious on two CTA's part. Um, during the first three years of COVID, they've made, um, filling out those applications, they really simplified them. Um, but this is also the year under which service levels are coming back. New pilot programs and different types of pilot programs and different types of programs have risen up under COVID. Um, there's the new thing that we started doing where we really started capturing unmet needs. And so there was a little bit of back and forth, um, with almost all of the transit um, agencies to um, really spend some time digging um, through their information so that we can give to CTA some really nice and clean data uh, of what's happening to our services um, during COVID and coming out of COVID. So all of us were asked um to to go back and bring as much information as as possible, and I think it's important to note that um, one of the qualifying factors in order to receive money is making sure that we fill out this information um, as clearly as possible, um, because this data is being collected, not just to give us money, but um, it's being collected for the purpose of understanding um, the ride patterns of our constituents in Contra Costa County. So um, the recommendation that has been brought by the subcommittee um, to the full PCC was to, it was kind of keeping that in mind. Uh, the goal is to make sure that we collect as much data as possible and that we're able to read this data, and it acts as a foundation so that we can understand how trend trends are coming out of COVID, um, which direction they're going, and for two CTA to make uh, better funding decisions or informed funding decisions when um, transportation trends are changing.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Kamara. Member Toth?
Yeah, I wanted to express gratitude too. This was quite a um, quite an investment of time to do all of the reading and conversations and meetings and post-meetings and um, it was very elucidating as um, Rashida expressed that the it's a new world order post-COVID, and there's a lot to learn, and I I want to thank those of you that worked hard with us to try and answer some of the questions that may not have been historically asked, and recognizing that we really are looking at equity in this space as we navigate where needs are being met and where they aren't being met, and that it's not a punitive effort to try and figure out where somebody's falling short, rather for us to be able to do a better job at assessing need and then designing programs around what that need is. So it was, it was really helpful, and I just um, wanted to express deep gratitude for Ying's leadership on it, because it was a lot for her her to organize and set up, and I also want to encourage folks to think about participating in it next year, because it really is a a a deep learning experience. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Board Member Toth. Um, member Reese?
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I want to, first of all, thank the subcommittee. I too served in the subcommittee, so I know the details of that goes into reviewing these um, these um, uh, the submissions. And um, one thing that we did ask, the City of Richmond asked for was other submissions that had been um, other um, applications that had been submitted, because we wanted to see how different their responses were from what the City of Richmond has been proposing and including in its, you know, applications, its Measure J claim form. And so I'm still waiting to see those submissions from other cities in West County, uh, so that we can see what we're missing, and then try to provide the best data that we can for, you know, this committee to review. Now, that being said, as you know, the City of Richmond has implemented a new plan other than any of the other cities in West County, and probably East County for that matter as well. Where we have partnered with LIFT, which means that collecting this data post-COVID, certain things are we're still trying to learn through this process ourself. We're still trying to figure out which data is necessary, what they are able to collect and what they're not able to collect. We've been able to give them the claim form in prior years so that they were at least know the type of data that we have to so they would at least know the type of data that we have to submit during the annual claim form so that we don't go back and forth with, you know, trying to get the information that is needed at such a late time. But, you know, some of these um, firms, particularly since we're dealing with LIFT, they don't have this kind of data. They are sometimes um, because of privacy, for privacy reasons, they're not able to connect certain data on certain individuals. We now, we explain to them, we're not looking for individual data, but just ridership data, much like the questions that are in the claim form. We are working on the details of the budget to try to get that to this committee, the subcommittee for review. I do plan to sit on the next subcommittee if I get voted in, because I want to make sure that Richmond is not targeted when we're trying to do such a fantastic job, be think of outside the box, doing innovative things that um, are different from other other transit users, I mean, other transit providers in West County, that when we get creative, we don't, you know, people really appreciate that we are doing something different and don't give us such a hard time, and also knowing that we want the data as much as you wanted on this committee or the subcommittee wish to have it. I said, as I mentioned, I sit on the subcommittee before. We know, I know what type of things we're looking for just for being able to distribute the money equally, but I've also heard um, through other eight, through WIC-TAC, and I'll be pretty, you know, um, forthright in saying that that they think that Richmond gets too much money, that some of the money could go to other cities in West County. And they, that's something they'll have to discuss with the the city council members that sit on WIC-TAC. I don't have anything to do with that. But, you know, I just want to see those other claim forms, and if they can come to our city for us to see what they've submitted, that so that we're not doing, we want to be able to probably replicate some of the things that they're doing. So can someone tell me, Rashida, maybe you can let me know when we're able to get that, you know, um, that data? Or Ying, you can tell me when we're able to review that data, the claim for us.
It's in your packet.
The other communities.
It's in the packet.
The details that we just like you asked for us?
Okay, everybody, it's about a, the attachment is about a hundred pages, well, I think. Uh, so it's a big attachment, but it's in your.
Well, I'll forward that to our legislative bodies, because they're the ones who are also asking. Secondly, is that, did you distinguish?
It's in the, you have to go to the website. So even though they put it in the packet, you have to, it's one of those things where you have to go to the agenda and then to the the attachments that are in the packet. That's, yeah. So it's not just about you forwarding, you have to go in there.
Okay, got it. So then also, tell, if you can, maybe in one short sentence, tell us briefly while we're all in this committee right now, tell us what the city is doing so different from these other these other municipalities in West County, what are we doing so different that we're not able to get, every year, this is a thing that happens every year with the City of Richmond. And I would tell you that every year, I know that we're submitting those claim forms like they should be submitted. So maybe this exception, the exception is this year, because we have, you know, you want a little bit more detail in terms of the information. But the question has been asked, not only by me, I'm I'm posting the question that's been asked by me from some of our council members. Why is it that Richmond is targeted every year? You see what I'm saying? I don't know, but I, it's, we certainly could not be that bad that we're not presenting all the information every year like this. Somebody give me the answer to that question, so I can go back in that art, let's just say the body know this.
Chair Clark, do you want me to first respond?
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, um, member Reese Brown, I want to just clarify that is uh, the word targeted, I I think that's that's misuse.
No, it's not. I'm using it as I'm misused.
Okay, and and I just want to explain, and for the for the benefit of the entire committee as well as the public, um, this, the claim form has been approved by this particular body, and that's available to all and being required to all operators, all seven of them. Yes, uh, Vice Chair Kamara mentioned that um, City Richmond was not the only agency that was being asked for additional information. Almost all agencies will ask for additional information. And the not the questions, the information requested are are exactly the same for everyone. And the committee, uh, the subcommittee during the process, when we met, we were very, very careful of holding everyone to the same standard, same requirement. So if we ask for, and the workers would ask for additional information from certain provider, we have to decide whether that was o- optional information versus required. So we really stick to that, what uh, what is required. So we, uh, if the Chair asks and allows, uh, I can uh, read to the entire committee what additional information we ask the city. So then you know that to answer your question, what 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 is missing? So I I I hope the Chair allows me to uh, read through the additional bullet points that we asked from you in the email to the city.
As and compared that with what you asked the other cities to do, because let me just add this to my conversation of what I just said. That when, you know, City of Richmond, the 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 residents, the users in West County that we serve are very pleased with the services that we've got. They get twenty-four hour, seven day a week service through LIFT, okay? And a lot of constituents and users call expressing so much appreciation for the Richmond Para Transit program and that they're well-served. But when we come to submitting the submitting a claim form every year, we go, we're always at this impasse with CCTA. You know, with the things that you guys are never, ever, ever satisfied with, which causes a lot of stress on a lot of our staff. You know, we're trying to get you all the information that you need and what you need in a timely manner, and then you come back with all these questions upon questions upon questions upon questions on top of questions, which is really frustrating, and which makes it seem as if Richmond is targeted. And, you know, when it gets to our legislative body, where the council members start thinking this, it's a, it's a real problem. It's a real problem. So maybe what we can do, you you don't have to read the questions off. It's not going to do anybody any good unless you read all the questions off for, from every city that you said you went back to ask those questions up, additional questions up. It's not going to do any good for you, just read off what you wanted for Richmond, read off what you wanted from the other ones too, so that we know that the intent is for Richmond to be well, to continue this service and to, and and your intent is to give us the funding that we deserve to continue our program services. So that's just my comments. It doesn't have to be answered right now, but it's just for the future in terms of as we move forward with this, with the, with submitting Measure J claim forms. Help us to get to that point, since so when we get to this point, we're not a lot of frustration.
So, um, I'm happy to follow up, um, since Ms. Reese Brown doesn't want me to read the questions, I'm happy to provide that information to the entire committee. The additional information we requested from City Richmond as well as the additional questions we have for all other operators. I think that would be a good uh, full disclosure, so we all know, um, that the reason, let me just clarify, the reason why there were more questions for City Richmond is there more, there was more information missing. So that is just where was missing, and we have a page just for everyone's information. We send you the additional, the city, the additional information request on June first. You do have the deadline until June fifteen. Last time I heard from your deputy city manager, she was going to work with the team to provide all the information requested by the deadline.
Yeah, I understand that. All I'm saying is that when we get to this this time every year is very frustrating. So maybe we can find some other solutions to meet it fast sooner, because every year is the same thing, every single year, which makes it seem to our legislative body that Richmond is being targeted. When I, when they come back to me with those questions, I don't know how to answer them necessarily, if I know that we keep getting questions upon questions upon questions and that you wouldn't understand it thorough enough. Okay, so I don't want this to keep going to our council members where they're frustrated. That's all I'm saying, because it doesn't look good for me to have to come back and explain to this committee and go back and forth, explain to our council members, who's very frustrated, knowing that the service is being provided in West County, but what they hear from the users is very, they're very pleased with it. So all I have to say, I wanted to add that from a very frustrating home, because that's how it comes to me, and it makes me very upset that our council members come to me very upset that they cannot receive the 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 money and time to continue the services, they have to go into their general fund, because there's there's a holdup on some end to submit the the payment to them, when we find that the services we're providing, everybody's pretty pleased with them.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, and I'm, I apologize for not knowing whose hand was raised first, but I'm going to go with the way that they are ordered on my screen. So I'll go with Vice Chair Kamara.
Thank you. Um, I can appreciate the frustration um, that Lori has voiced. But it is important for me to clear up the narrative um, on this particular call. And I'll speak not only as a subcommittee member, but also as somebody who submitted a claim. Um, I'm pretty sure I turned my claim in before the deadline. Um, but when I turned my claim in and I sat in for my interview, based on the questions that was going back and forth, I was missing something. It's important to know that the questions that were asked of me, based on what I put in the claim form, may be different from the questions that's asked from somebody else. Because what I may be missing may not necessarily be what two, three, four, or five other transit agencies may be missing. I may be missing my name on the first page, and somebody else may be missing the signature on the last page. So they're not going to say, Rashida, can you give me your name and a signature? Not if I gave you a signature. You're just going to say your name is missing on the first page. Then the person who's missing the signature, they'll go to that person and say, by the way, you're missing the signature. So first, I want to clarify that piece, that the the questions may not be the same, because what may be missing from each of the agencies may not be the same. It's unrealistic to say that. The only thing that's the same is the claim form document itself. That's the same. The other thing I want to mention is that the services that we provide are slightly different. But there are certain numbers that are the same, like for instance, trip count. It's important to note, and even though the list is not being said here, it's important to note that there's a, there's a huge chunk of trip count that's missing. And that's part of what we all do. It's one of the basic things that everybody has to provide, is a certain amount of trip count. So I think that it's reasonable to go back and say, give us some clarification, and I'll just use that bullet point. Give us some clarification on trip count. The reason why I'm saying that is because it was also something that needed to be clarified, and I had to go back. And if I hadn't given that information before this meeting, the subcommittee would have said, Rashida, we're not going to approve County Connections funds right now, because you're missing trip count on a certain aspect of your form. Well, they told me at that meeting, Rashida, you're missing a certain amount of information on your form. How soon can you get it back to us? Well, fortunately, I was able to get it back to them in time for this subcommittee, for this particular meeting. So I think it's important to note that as a recipient of go back and fix your data before we can approve this, it's important that I, that both sides of this is represented. I don't know about past years, because the approval for this is specifically for this year, and I know that specifically And I know that specifically for this year, I came up short on some data. And so it was important that if I wanted to get approved this year, I needed to come back with that data. Fortunately, I was able to come back in time for this particular meeting. So it's important that I just kind of clear up the narrative regarding that. If there, um, if there's something else happening behind the scenes, then it might be a question for, you know, to CTA staff and the document itself. But I don't think that since I was a recipient of go back and collect your data before we can approve you, I think it's important to note that I was a recipient of that request. So if there is a request by any of the transit agencies, and trust me, I'm doing innovative things too. But in order for me to qualify for those funds, there's a document that I need to fill out. And there's a sub, subcommittee that oversees that document. And if I want those, then I need to come back either with the information or with an explanation why that information cannot be provided so that it can be reviewed. But we can't just go base, based on the basis of the fact that you asked me for that information. I just wanted to clarify that a little bit, since I was a recipient of go back and get your data before we can pay you, uh, for me.
I understand that. That's not where I'm coming from. If it's understood like that, no, the latter is to this. It's something deeper than.
I'm, I was going to say, we need to go through our hand raising process. Um, so I think the next to speak was Board Member Toth.
Yes, thank you. Um, I wanted to also just clarify, uh, the process for questions originated with incomplete um, forms that were presented, but also those that had data that was questionable. Um, and they all got asked questions. They, many of the providers got asked to provide additional information, but a lot of them also got asked while on to sort of give additional detail. This is our job. It's taxpayer dollars. I come to this table to make sure that the money is being spent in the way in which the expenditure plan says that it should be paid. So this is sort of the lens of the review committee. And when we look at applications that have numbers that don't make real world sense, we, we have to ask, that's our job. And I don't think there's any singling out. You could talk to East Bay Paratransit and I'm sure they weren't happy with me and my questions either. But I mean, this is, this is the process. And, um, I will say that specifically with Richmond, that accessibility issue for people with power chairs and wheelchairs. So if we're only providing Lyft rides where they are not wheelchair accessible, they're not, um, folding up walkers, like what other option is there? Or if they don't have cell phones. So these were like nuanced questions. We needed the answers to. The, we didn't have any other applications where more than fifty percent of the taxpayer dollars were going to administrative overhead. These are things that stand out in an application question for. When we're asking for geography, because we're looking at what areas covered and you can't answer who lives where and where the trips are going to, and whether or not they're one-time trips or subscription trips or how that works. Those are things that we need the data on so that we're comparing across sites so that we can ensure money is being spent appropriately. And we can also use the information to plan to make sure that all of the needs of all the community members are being met. So I will say as a member of this review committee, we looked in at each of the different applications and asked all the questions that came up in the course of us, um, investigating how these reports were submitted and what information was provided. I, 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 uh, am sorry that you feel, uh, targeted. Uh, but certainly I would say that, that, that is saying that the committee was targeting you and I don't think that that's accurate. So, um, I think those are the, the, the comments that I want to make. Thank you.
Yes, Member Reese.
So I'm going to say that, yeah, so my, my position still holds true, uh, as far as I'm concerned, that Rich, Richmond was being targeted, has been in the past over several years. I'm going to leave that, the latter to that, that Rashida, you mentioned two different scenarios, maybe is something dealing with the, to the two agencies, WIC Tech and CCTA, that we need to probably sit down and have a conversation about. We don't have any problem with submitting the things that you've asked, that the subcommittee has asked for on that application on the Measure J claim form. Don't have any problem with it at all if you came back for additional information. It's just the process in terms of how this continues to go back. Every year we have to deal with this, not receiving the Measure J funds for months and months and months during the time that we know we've answered all the questions. Even when it goes past the committee, the committee has approved it, there's some delay even after that for receiving the funds from WIC Tech and from CCTA. So we need to probably have this, this conversation with CCTA and with WIC Tech as to why it takes so long after even the subcommittee has approved it. So what you're talking about in terms of all the things that we need, I don't have a problem with submitting that. We're working on, our staff is working on getting the more details from Lyft that we know that they don't have in their system and asking for those details that we've asked them for every year since we've been contracted out with them to make sure, because they don't have that information that they necessarily keep or give to us because for privacy reasons, that's what they claim. But we have to go through the struggle with them as well. But I'll meet with Ying to see if we can meet with their board or whoever. Maybe we'll start with her first. And then, um, probably have one or two of our council members in on that meeting so that they can hear from her. You know, it's what the delay is with through WIC Tech and from CCTA. And that's all I have to say now. Thank you for your time. We'll get that information to you right away, the subcommittee that is.
Thank you, Board Member Reese. Um, Staff Ying.
Thank you. And thank you, Member Reese Brown. I appreciate you saying that you will be able to complete the information in time. I think that's what the subcommittee was looking for and they will have the opportunity to review the information. Uh, I, I just want to take a few minutes to explain. I, I want, I don't want to leave any confusion when we leave this topic. It's the CCTA and, and WIC Tech. Um, so for the Measure J program, since West County, uh, under WIC Tech, WIC Tech has the, the authority in how to allocate the program fifteen dollars going to West County. So there's really nothing behind the scene. WIC Tech, they, we've been doing this, they've been doing the same formula for several years. Uh, but they are always welcome to revisit it in consultation with CCTA and with its own partners to revisit the distribution formula. And that is in the authority to do. So just want, I would just want to pu- uh, provide that clarification, clarification out there.
I'm I want to comment on that. I know what's in their authority. I know what is in their authority. I'm saying that because of their authoritative reasons from CCTA to release those funds, that has been a problem. And that is why we need to sit down and have a conversation about it. You don't tell me what's, who has the authority to do what. I already know that. We need to have a conversation because they're authoritative. For authoritative reasons, they're not releasing it. And we have a problem with CCTA releasing it, even after the subcommittee, if the committee has approved it. That's what I'm trying to get you to understand.
I think if this, one of the questions I had, if it's okay, was, um, if staff has this prepared now to maybe review the funding allocation timeline? Because we talked about when the forms were due, when people, um, when the subcommittee had met. And then what was the deadline for approval? Do you, does, do CCTA staff have the timeline for release of funds?
Yes, um, so for all the, uh, for, uh, our July planning committee meeting as well as our authority board meeting, we do have a staff recommendation to approve the allocation. As that's what, uh, is in your attachment A. Um, and that is again, is the annual process. Uh, so each agency's with the dollar amount, the, uh, allocation being spelled out. And when other board approved it, it's, um, in, we start making payments for the ones that the agencies who have their claim form approved. For the, in the City of Richmond case, we have asked them to submit additional information by June fifteenth, which is this, uh, Thursday. And then, uh, the subcommittee will group and review it. If everything goes, goes on time, right? Everything goes smoothly. At your July meeting, which is this, this committee's July meeting, uh, you will hear a recommendation from the subcommittee.
So it would go to the July board meeting?
It's in, it's independent, uh, the people who approve the allocation. So that means, um, the PCC will be the last, uh, committee that makes a decision of when that claim is ac- accepted and approved, then CCTA staff will have the authority to release the fund to City of Richmond.
Okay. So from that time, it sounds like it takes a two to three month process depending on because it has to wait for another board meeting to come up before it moves through, correct?
We don't need to go back to our, our authority board.
Okay. Okay.
Chair Clark, this is, uh, Member Smith. I'd just like to inform you that I will have to leave the meeting at three fifteen. I have another important meeting at three thirty.
Okay, thank you. Um, Vice Chair Kamara.
Now, I, I guess I just wanted to talk a little bit about the timeline. Um, as a subcommittee, we did discuss, you know, how quickly can we get the list to Richmond? Um, and we wanted to make sure that they, we pushed not just them to get it to us quickly, but so that it can go, they don't have to wait so long and that it can quickly go to the next PCC meeting for, um, review. So that was actually part of the conversation. Um, obviously we wanted everybody at this PCC meeting to get approval, right? That's the reason why, um, myself and, you know, somebody else mentioned East Bay. East Bay was somebody that was sent to go get back some information. So the timeline in getting the information, if everything is, those that we were able to approve on the first meeting, we did. Uh, those who said, if you can give us this information in a timely manner, um, it was set to go for this, this particular meeting that we're on now. So the timeline for releasing these funds for those who are being approved today and Richmond, who could potentially get the information to us by the fifteenth, it's set to go before, um, the very next meeting. So we discussed not delaying it at all, but let's get it to the very next meeting and not beyond that. So it, it is very dependent on, um, Richmond giving the information on that list or potentially explaining the information on that list for it to be, um, expedited.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments or discussion from the committee? Okay, um, Teriann, do we have any written public comments?
No written public comment.
If anyone from the public would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand and staff or I will call upon you.
No verbal comments.
All right. Do I have a motion and a second?
Who? Member Toth?
Uh, Member Toth, um, has a motion. Do I have a second? Member Ridgeway?
A second.
Thank you. Right. So we have a first by Toth and a second by Ridgeway. Thank you very much. Teriann, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Member Birdwell? Member Birdwell? I'll come back. Member Cooney joined us during this item.
Aye.
Member Dawjali?
Yes.
Member Ridgeway?
Aye.
Member Queen?
Aye.
Member Reese Brown?
Aye.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Thompson?
Yes.
Member Toth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kamara?
Yes.
Chair Clark?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. I'm sorry, I missed memory. Ibarra.
Aye, thank you.
Um, passes unanimously with Members Perry and Timothy absent.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, Member Smith?
Real quick, I got my, um, microphone to work again. I don't know if you guys noticed. I couldn't do anything.
Sorry, I did forget to affect you as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, Member Smith, if you can hang in there with us just a little bit. Um, the next action item is regarding the expiration of a member's term, which will be presented by Ying Smith.
All right, I will, uh, make this really quick. This is, uh, we review the members, um, um, their terms to and ask for of, in the group of the, um, hair transit riders. We ask if, uh, you, you will serve a two-year term, but we ask if you have interest in continuing to serve. And if so, um, then the committee can recommend, um, uh, it, um, extend the new, let me see, what's the terminology, the extension of your term? So I understand Chair Clark, you have, uh, conversations with Member Dawjali and
Yes, I did. And he is here.
Yes, I am.
Um, so Member Dawjali, your term is expired. And what we're asking is if you would like to continue your service on the PCC um, and recommit to in another ten years. Two, wow. That was a Freudian slip. Excuse me. Recommit to a new term of two years.
I was going to say, I was going to mention, I think I've been on this committee for ten years.
Ten years, right? Maybe it was subconscious then.
Yes, I do commit to that two years.
Wonderful, wonderful. Um, so thank you, Ying, for that. And I'd like to open up, are there any comments from the committee? The only comment I have, which is the one I just made, was, um, thank you very much for your commitment. We're happy to have you for another two years. Teriann, have we received any written public comments?
No written public comment.
If anyone from the public would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand and staff or I will call on you.
No virtual comment.
Okay. So do I have a motion? All right. I have a motion by Smith. Do I have a second?
I can second it. It's Debbie.
All right, and a second by Toth. Teriann, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Member Birdwell?
Aye.
Member Cooney?
Aye.
Member Dawjali?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
Member Ridgeway?
Aye.
Member Queen?
Aye.
Member Reese Brown?
Aye.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Thompson?
Yes.
Member Toth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kamara?
Yes.
Chair Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Members Perry and Timothy absent.
Welcome, Member Dawjali. All right. So the next item on the agenda is an informational update introduced by Ying Smith on the status of the Accessible Transportation Strategic Plan Short Term Implementation Projects and Measure X Funding.
Thank you, Chair Clark. I know I, we have this long title for you to read. Um, I'll try to keep my presentation short. Um, I understand there's a lot of interest from the PCC to hear updates on what, uh, the implementation on the Accessible Transportation Strategic Plan. And I want to, uh, just go through this, uh, brief PowerPoint presentation. Um, what we've been working on besides the, um, setting up the structure is also looking at how the Measure X from the county, the funding going next year. We, uh, just for your information, we received in this current fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we received one point four million dollars from Measure X, uh, within CCTA, uh, to do the implementation. Uh, we are, um, actually haven't been able to expand all the, all the funds. Uh, but doesn't mean that, uh, we are not really keeping ourselves busy. We will have been. So in the next year, we want to look at our strategies from the ATSP, the Accessible Transportation Strategic Plan and pull out the ones that we think that we can either complete or at least get started for the upcoming year. And some of the work we've been doing, um for example, the one seat ride expansion uh and also building up the coordinating entity as well as the mean space fair. Uh the other project that one call one click would really want to get started, but we think that will become our next fiscal year's project. So we look at those tier one and tier two strategies. And um you we have it here. And in in our plan, we first want to request another one point four million dollars uh of allocation from Measure X. And then the unspent funds from the current year, we want to roll it over, so combine the funds. So with the combined funds, we're looking at uh one point nine six million dollars for the upcoming year, right, with the one point four plus our unspent dollars. Uh the work we want to focus on is continue to work on this establishing a coordinating entity and also develop an equity framework. We have several projects we and strategies want to focus on. Uh we uh actually John Cunningham was on the on at the meeting now as a guest. Um he had this idea of a technology plan that combines several strategies. So we can look at those technology solutions in a more comprehensive way rather than doing the one-off projects. So the technology plan will cover uh one call, one click, real-time transportation information on the pair transit side. I had look at the uniform kind Y eighty-eight pair transit eligibility certification program and also look into procure John pair transit scheduling software. Uh the projects want to and strategies want to focus on is to go back to strategy one. Our current project is called one seat right expansion. But when you go back to the strategy, uh it actually is broader. It gives us more flexibility. For example, the uh in talking about a West County Medical Trip Pilot Program, that would fit into strategy one. Uh it's not called one seat right, not with the one seat right, but is a one-seat kind of transportation to go from West County to other medical destinations. And also want to look focus on strategy two, same day to program for team, which is travel training. Uh twelve uh strategy twenty, strategy twenty, mean space fair, we have um a pilot program in East County partnering with Tri Delta Transit. The goal is to expand this mean space fair subsidy program to countywide. There's again a lot of interest on that. Um and also want to uh start to look at hospital discharge services. But that is the uh what we want to build into Measure X program. The our job service plan was approved by the task force at the June eighth meeting. And then now we'll go back to the C C T as well as support the supervisor process to get it formally uh accepted and uh get the funding allocation going. So a little bit change of topic. Uh I did mention that we have a uh mean space or low income fare program in East County. Uh this is partnership with Tri Delta Transit uh people who are certified by Tri Delta Transit for ADA pair transit services. And if they meet the low income criteria, they will be eligible to receive free um uh tickets uh to ride the pair transit uh services. Is up to ten one-way trips a year, uh I'm sorry, a month, and the pilots for six months, so they can get up to six uh ticket books with ten tickets each. We have in the Tri Delta Transit database about two thousand passengers, so we send out a bit more than two thousand postcards. So far, we have believe those numbers are slightly outdated where at um at the time we did it was May twelve. Uh we have forty-four inquiries and it on nineteen passengers we got approved. Now those numbers up a little bit to the fifties, like a little bit less than sixty inquiries. Uh twenty-four customers are received free tickets. We are doing additional outreach to get the word out because we feel like it's a little bit like a slow start. Um this population is hard to reach, so in in addition to postcards, Tri Delta Transit now has the flyers on the their pair transit vehicles, which is a good advertisement. And they also did the automatic message for calls to all the customers and uh additional avenues, for example, the dialysis center, they send out some flyers to get the word out. So I will have a small uptake and we hope over time uh when the work gets out, we'll have more inquiries. So that concludes my presentation and I have to answer your questions.
Thank you. Yes. Do we have any questions from the committee? Counsel, according to counsel. Member Ibarra?
Thank you. Um Ying, I think you said that there's a flyer, an outreach flyer for this. Is that something that you would be able to share with me? If I've seen it before, I wouldn't be able to get my hands on it easily, but if you can share it with me, then I may be able to assist with the distribution.
Right, yeah, I will follow. We uh it's in both English and Spanish, so it's it's very simple, but I I'm happy to send it to you.
I'm seeing some head nods, so maybe it would be worth sending it out to the P C C just so that we all have it um at the top of our email to help do outreach with that.
That would be great. Thank you. Thank you for any help to get the word out. And I see John is here and I don't know if you have anything to add. I know John also helped uh to get the word out through the supervisors newsletter, right?
No, I have nothing to add. That was very comprehensive, Ying. Thank you.
Uh member Noya?
Hi, I just wanted to clarify if uh the funds if I know there was like a designated amount for this fiscal year ending in June. And if that's gonna roll over to the following fiscal, okay.
That would, that is our request from staff to roll it over, so we don't uh we don't want to return the funds back to the county. Sorry.
Okay. So that's the request. Thank you.
Any other comments from from the committee? I know we asked for this on a on a kind of on a regular basis, so they were um kind of keeping up on it. Terri Anne, have we received any written public comments?
No written public comment.
Okay, if anyone from the public would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand and staff or I will call upon you.
No verbal comments.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is another informational update. It's introduced by Ying Smith on the status of the Accessible Transportation Strategic Plan Coordinating Entity Twenty Twenty Three Work Plan.
Thank you Chair Clark. Um I actually this thing, the work plan is included in your agenda packet. And I don't find on uh presenting, I think it's just a good visual, so you know uh the items we're working on and I'm uh happy to answer your questions either here or you can just reach out to me if you have questions on the work.
Does anybody have any comments or questions for staff? No, okay. Terri Anne, have we received any written public comments?
No written public comment.
All right, if anyone from the public would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand and staff or I will call upon you.
No verbal comments.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is reports. Do we have anyone who attended the most recent Service Review Advisory Committee meeting that wants to report out on that? Okay, anyone from the Senior Mobility Action? Oh, I'm so sorry. Member Ridgeway.
No worries. Hi, everyone. It's Kim Ridgeway, A C Transit. Um the last Service Review Advisory Committee was just this past Tuesday. Excuse me, the sixth, and there was no quorum, but the committee still met and just received some act, some non-action items, which included um the broker's report from General Manager Cindy Lopez as well as an update on the Contact This Fair App Survey Results by Conopari and Associates. Um so our next S R A C meeting will be in August, and I'll have an update on that as well uh when it comes back, and we will see if we have quorum at that time.
Thank you so much, member Ridgeway. Um the Senior Mobility Action Council. I'm not sure if they met between the last time we met and now.
They did. Uh John, were you at that one? Because I couldn't be at that last meeting.
I had a conflict as well, if I'm recalling correctly, so sorry, no update from me.
All right. I know they were talking about, um I know one of the topics that they were talking about was to really study um gaps in services and lessons learned um during the pandemic and around emergency disaster response. Rashida, were you there at it? No?
Oh. So I'm sitting here thinking, wait a minute, I was there. What did we talk about? And then you just run like, oh yeah, because what you're talking about was what I said, and I was like, oh, that sounds above familiar. So um yeah, that that was probably the biggest takeaway about lessons learned. I don't think we've, I think we're all just kind of still recovering um from COVID, but as humans, we quickly forget, case in point. So it was important for us to mention at SMAC that um whilst we're we're recovering, that we really don't forget what our lessons learned are. Um I strongly believe that there's a huge segment of the population that we serve that have fallen through the cracks during COVID. Um we need to talk about how their needs changed, how they fell through the cracks, which of our services worked, which ones didn't work, how transit agencies were able to pivot, um the unique challenges. Everybody knows what to do during an earthquake or a fire. We spent a lot of money prepping them for that. So what did we miss for COVID? What can we do to prep ourselves for the next big unknown um shift or natural disaster? And um what can we do in our own individual fields to make sure that we are prepared or ready to pivot to meet the needs of our seniors and persons with disabilities when something like this happens again?
Thank you. Um John?
Yeah, thanks. I could sort of tear off of Rashida's comments. It's good timing. I just received an email from the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services today. Uh I think there are a couple of people in this meeting that participated in that office's uh transportation meetings that they had regularly pre-COVID. Uh once COVID hit, they abandoned those meetings because there were more pressing issues. Uh they're gonna restart those meetings and uh they wanna continue the dialogue. They had started a comprehensive transportation emergency response plan, which was also abandoned when COVID hit, and they're gonna start that back up again, so uh I guess keep an eye out for meeting notices and Rashida was gonna reach out specifically uh to you on that to get your feedback on how to proceed, so just a sort of a already I hijacked this thread as a P S A for the county, so uh thanks for for tolerating that.
No, I think this, I think it's great that they brought um they gave us an opportunity to do that because when we prepared for emergency, uh all those emergency planning, it wasn't an overnight thing. Uh we had to take it one bite at a time before people were ready. Um so I think with COVID, we shouldn't wait too long. Um we need to start having meetings. We need to start talking about it. We need to start collecting data as was mentioned earlier, and some of this data, being able to wrap our hands around some of that data um means we need to go back at who we were transporting before. You know, who were these people and how come they're not back? It can't just be the old, well, we're not sure whether transportation is safe anymore. It's more than it's more than that because the virus is gone. So there's so many things that have changed. For a lot of people, we're now serving them in different ways. Um we were taking things to them versus them going out to get things, so we really need to evaluate what we're doing and how we can continue to help the community. What different partnerships we need to make? Um what different partnerships we did make, how we can build on those partnerships?
Thank you. I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads as well. Thank you very much for that. Especially the insight that nothing happens overnight. If you don't plan, it takes a long time. Hey, thank you. Anything else from the Senior Mobility Action Council or related comments? Before we move on? Okay. I have number seven, item seven, correspondence and communications. Does anyone have anything to share? And anything from staff that we received?
Make for odd enough.
Yes.
Um my usual update on A B three sixty-one. So just want to let everyone know that we're continuing to meet remotely. Um we're following the guidance under the Contra Costa Health Services. Has not been updated since March twenty-seventh, so we are continuing to use that as it is recommending social distancing. Uh we're gonna be taking the item to the board at the board meeting next Wednesday, and we're gonna be recommending that the meetings remain virtual for July. Um as you know, we're making this determination every thirty days, which is a requirement of Assembly Bill three sixty-one. And then I also wanted to give you a brief update, which I met with um our chair and vice chair about two weeks ago to do a briefing and had told them that um our legislative bills related to the Brown Act kind of were going nowhere and as you know, the legislative process is always changing, and we had one that was amended last minute. Um so there are two potential bills actually back out there. Um one of them is A B five five seven heart. Now, this one extends the current A B three sixty-one sunset, so that sun sets January first, twenty twenty-four. Um while this is a good thing, it doesn't really help us on meeting virtually on a month-to-month basis basis, as as you know, with A B three sixty-one, there has to be a proclaimed state of emergency um and recommendations for social distancing, and it would continue with that. So that um is set for a hearing in the Senate Judiciary Committee on June twenty-seventh. So that would be helpful in the state of an emergency. Um otherwise, it doesn't really help the monthly meetings that we hold, but still good to have that out there. And then there's another bill. Um this is Senate Bill five four four, layered. Um this one passed Senate and it went to the Assembly with the Assembly Governmental Organization Committee. Um however, it has to go through three hearings in Assembly. Uh the first one, there's not a date set yet. Um and that's with that Assembly Governmental Organization Committee, so that one's out there. Um it's likely gonna get continued into the next calendar year, which means it wouldn't be in effect on January first of next year. Um this bill some amends the vaguely keen Open Meetings Act, that basically removes some of the current teleconferencing requirements um such as putting the address on there, having it open at each title conferencing location, and then having it posted at each location, so it does remove those requirements and allows for teleconferencing to continue. Um it also requires procedures for accommodating individuals with disabilities and mandates disclosure of other individuals present with a member at a remote location, so these are the two bills that we are watching. Um hopefully, this uh Senate Bill five four four uh moves forward uh through these three committees. Um if not this year, hopefully next year. So these, these are really the only two right now that are still um an option to help us with uh continuing teleconferencing and meetings. So I don't know if anyone has any questions, but that's that's my update on our legislative bills related to the Brown Act.
Thank you so much. Um member Toth?
I just wanna thank Terri Anne because she goes above and beyond and ensures that we have the latest and greatest knowledge, but also that the board has, the full C C T A board has the information that they need to continue approving this to be a remote meeting. Um I've been on the Paratransit Coordinating Council since uh before I had children and I had brown hair. Um literally, uh I've been on here way too long and I've never seen anybody who represents the needs of this committee as beautifully as Terri Anne does, and I will just say, I have lived through going to the in-person meetings and having members who use paratransit not be able to access the meetings or go to full C C T A board meetings and have a ride there on paratransit and then not be able to get home because the fixed route service ends before the meeting ends, like we've seen just a travesty of things happen over the years and the fixed route service ends before the meeting ends. Like, we've seen just a travesty of things happen over the years, and this virtual platform allows people with a variety of various different disabilities to participate and engage in civic life, and I deeply appreciate that you're standing behind equity and this committee, so thank you, Terri Anne.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, do we have any other comments under Correspondence and Communications? I did want to say again, thank you, Terri Anne. Absolutely, it's the, um, the best education that I get on that is from you. Um, and I share that out, and also just a reminder that we have asked Terri Anne to just keep, to give us a report every time we have a meeting, just so kind of where we know where we stand, so thank you for that. Um, now we'll move on to item eight, if there's no other discussion, which is future agenda items. Are there any members that would like to have topics agendized for future meetings? Um, I'm going to call on Board Member Toth, because I know she had mentioned at the beginning an item that we should have agendized to continue to discuss.
Yeah, so that was the, the how we incorporate accessibility into all transportation projects, like wouldn't it be an amazing world if we had a checklist of things that everybody who was getting public funding to spend on transportation had to look at to ensure that they were thinking about accessibility? And if so, what would that look like? Is that enough information for you?
Yes.
And then we'll solve all the world's problems while we're at it, so. It's a good one, but it's a great discussion. Um, does anybody else have anything for future agenda items that they would like to add? Okay, um, if anyone from the public would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand and staff or I will call on you. Thank you very much for that. I want to thank you all for your time and rearranging your schedule to make this, um, off-scheduled, scheduled meeting, really appreciate it. That does conclude our meeting, and the meeting is adjourned at three thirty-six PM. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Take care.